Good afternoon, everybody. We're just calling to our meeting to order and I'd like to welcome everyone and remind everyone that this particular meeting, as in all future meetings, will be videotaped for our websites and you can see your performance in its entirety sometime after the meeting. But first, we'd like to have the folks from the PA Counseling Services present. And if you'd like whoever's going to speak, it would be me. Can you introduce the team?
Well, that would be me. I'm Kimberly Ernest. I'm a licensed clinical psychologist and licensed professional counselor at PA Counseling Services. And here with me are Ruth Davis and Roy Smith from our agency. And I just want to start out by thanking you all for the opportunity to come and speak to you again. I know that we had presented previously, but now we've included more comprehensive information for assessment, drug and alcohol testing, as well as seven days a week, about 68 hours, that kind of stuff. So we have a lot more detail. I think we took the information from last presentation, were able to integrate that and bring that back to have a better presentation for you all. So allow me to start out just by handing out our presentations for everybody.
If they're the same, I do have my for the judges.
I'll take one, Ruthie, because I brought everything else I have but didn't bring that.
Traveling ones.
I brought Astro's, I was insured. You never know.
So just to start out, a little bit about Pennsylvania Counseling Services, who we are and what we do. We were founded here in Lebanon County in 1983, right out of Roy Smith's living room. I think clients initially came in, they were warned and careful of the dog on their way through their door, and that's where we began. Since then, we've expanded out to provide mental health, drug and alcohol psychiatry, school-based outpatient children services, recovery apartments, a recovery center, an inpatient prison diversion program, and several other programs across eight different counties. So we've certainly grown since our inception. We have numerous established and valuable working relationships here within Lebanon County, here within the community. It's our community, it's what we care about, it's what we're passionate about, so that's why we're here to present with you today. When it comes to the folks that we've worked with here in Lebanon County, there's a long list of many, and I'm not going to go through the time to read them all to you, but these are the individuals that we've worked with here in Lebanon for years, many through Renaissance Crossroads, which is our inpatient prison diversion program, and we've worked with probation and parole now, I believe, 15 years on that program. And working through that program as well with the district attorney's office, now working with DUI court, had the opportunity to go with to DUI court training a couple months ago. It was very interesting, really enjoying all the different relationships and things that we're working on here. Additionally, mental health, physical needs, psychosocial needs. We've worked with all these different agencies for many, many years. We know how to connect up and get our clients where they need to go. Also, we have numerous established treatment and referral relationships, so either within Lebanon County, but we know that you can't always find a bed within Lebanon County. It's one of the problems when it comes to doing drug and alcohol treatment. So we also work with agencies throughout the central Pennsylvania area and have an opportunity to go up and visit some of these different sites and find ways to get our clients through the door. I remember St. Joseph's Addiction Center outside of State College had an opportunity to go tour and get our clients connected in there. So we do have numerous relationships designed here, not only within Lebanon County, but in our surrounding counties, to make sure we're getting our clients where they need to go. Additionally, there's numerous Lebanon County outpatient treatment providers, and I know one of the questions that has come up is if we're the provider of the day reporting center, will we also be the provider of all of the treatment for every client that comes through? We're not looking to start a monopoly, that's not our goal, and it's illegal. So for us, provider choice is absolutely necessary. We can't require them to go through PA counseling. Now, if they do go external PA counseling, we need a release of information, we need to confirm that they're doing what they say that they're doing, but their treatment, they will have provider choice. Let's say Phil Higginson is closer to them and they don't want to catch a ride into Lebanon at 6:00 o'clock at night to go to therapy, that's absolutely fine, but we'll find a way to make that work. So YPCS, we employ approximately 155 employees in the Lebanon County area. Not only reemployers, but we live in this community. Myself, Roy, Ruthie, we live here in Lebanon. We've invested in the downtown area of Lebanon through improving existing buildings, creating space for individuals together for meetings, fellowship, treatment, and access help. We're passionate about Lebanon County. We care about our community. We've worked hard to help the residents of Lebanon County and to feed back into our community, because we love it here. At the end of the day, I have a seven-month-old son, he's going to go to school here. I hope that at that point in time, some of the drug and alcohol concerns that we're seeing out there in the schools and the communities has subsided. So local jail composition, and there is a stat sheet in your packet, but no need to reference it right now, but we're seeing that a lot of local prisons and jails have a large propensity of co-occurring issues. That means individuals have both mental health and drug and alcohol concerns, and about 50% of local jail compositions, now this isn't specific to Lebanon County, Lebanon County doesn't gather that data, but local jails across the country tend to fall into this category. So about 50% are co-occurring, about close to 20% have dependence or abuse problems only, about 50% have mental health only, and about 17%, I like to jokingly say they're lying, but about 70% don't meet criteria for any diagnostic category. So how do we resolve this problem? It's our goal to have integrated treatments that address both mental health and substance use disorders as the primary condition, and this evidences the best outcomes in day reporting centers. We also have specialized interventions to target family unification, trauma, PTSD, co-occurring disorders, healthcare, education, employment. We want to treat the whole offender. We recognize that this punishment and release program isn't working. And as you can see with our recidivism, as you can see sort of across our agencies, sometimes it feels a bit like a revolving door. We see the same folks over and over and over again. We always hope, maybe this time will be the time they get it, but at the end of the day, when you have 12 one-hour-a-week appointments with somebody, sometimes it's difficult to help them get onto the right track when there's all these other influences impacting the offender. So our goal is to treat the whole offender. Also, we know that absence of risk to public safety, treatment of those with co-occurring disorders in the community also evidences the best outcomes. So our philosophy of working with criminal populations, honest, respectful, direct. We make our expectations clear and we ensure our clients know what their expectations are, so they can hit or not hit those expectations, that's their choice. Very much, I've often said, my treatment philosophy is here's recovery, you can take it or leave it, I'm not going to force you to it, you know, you can leave it a course of water, but you can't make them drink. That's our approach. Here's recovery, take it or leave it. We utilize a graduated phase model to serve as an incentive and increase freedoms over the course of participation in the program. We have a regimented schedule to help offenders internalize that structure that they need. Many of these clients do not have a long history of structured interactions. Many have never had, they might be 40-years-old and never had a job, where they got up every day and took a shower and brushed their teeth and showed up. So what we're really working on here is to create an environment where they can take that structure, where they can learn to learn. They can learn to integrate and use that structure to move forward. We're also going to be very individualized in our thing for each offender. I don't believe in a one-size-fits-all model for treatment, it doesn't work. Research has shown us it doesn't work. So we'll be very specific in addressing individual needs. And then obviously coordination and communication with community agencies. It's important we all work together, this is one goal that we can all come together and drive towards. So some of our objectives and our goals and what we understand to be the objectives of the individuals in this room is to reduce prison overcrowding, provide participants with access to community resources and treatment, reduce challenges associated with reentry following incarceration, so hopefully once they get out, they stay out, reduce other risk factors, joblessness, homelessness, non-medically managed mental health or drug and alcohol problems, family conflict, everyday stress, and so we want to make sure that we're addressing each of those across the board. We also want to provide a cost-effective system of rehabilitating offenders. We want to make sure that the money that's going towards this program is being effectively allocated and utilized to ensure that it's not providing an additional burden on the Lebanon County residents. I'm a resident, I want my taxes to go up, so we want to be effective. Community safety is always very important. We also want to manage higher-needs offenders to reduce the burden on probation and parole, and provide a single site, a one-stop shop, so to speak, to have all their needs met and access to all the resources in one place. Now, with that being said, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. So there are certain agencies that are already providing services here in Lebanon County. We don't need to bring all of that in-house, although we'll certainly have space available for them if they choose to come in-house, but we're not going to focus on duplication of existing resources. I don't think that's a good time, a good use of our time or energy. We will provide a location where external agencies can come in and address the needs of the offender, and obviously, again, provider choice, I feel like that's really important for us to emphasize, so I have this in here a couple times. Excuse me. All right. So Lebanon County Day Reporting Center Program Basics. We plan to use case management to help us securing jobs and housing, program staff to meet and greet and document daily reporting. It's really important that we know who's coming through the door and that we consistently keep track of who's showing up. Individualized behavioral change planning informed by both psychological testing and the LSIR. In your packets, you'll see an additional handoff. I wasn't sure how much time we would have today, so I didn't dive too much into that, but in your packets, you'll see an additional handoff about all the different types of psychological assessment that we plan to have available in addition to the LSIR. We also want to have educational services, case management for help with navigating fines and costs. We know many times our clients might owe more money than they're going to make in a couple of years. They need to find a way to be systematically paying on those fines and costs, so that they're meeting their external needs, and it's not always fun to pay fines and costs. They have things they'd rather spend their money on, sneakers, hats, there's all kinds of different things they'd rather put their cash towards, so we need to make sure that they're getting paid consistently. Case management for support with domestic relationships. We also plan to use motivational interviewing, case management linkage to community resources. Family psychoeducation, we believe, is a very, very important topic. It's something that we've done for many, many years at Crossroads, and family education is so valuable, because these individuals are coming out of incarceration or starting the disease of addiction, but their family members don't know how to handle it, and oftentimes their efforts to help backfire. They're trying to help their individual, they love their loved one, obviously, but what they're doing isn't getting them closer to their goals. And so family education, teaching them how to set and maintain healthy boundaries to protect the families, as well as assist the offender, is absolutely necessary. They would use a planner and certain location verification, which is something we've done at Crossroads for 15 years. We would also have criminality courses and psychoeducational programming. We plan to use evidence-based programs, onsite drug testing and breathalyzers, and computer labs available for job skills, job search, all that kind of good stuff. So just the basics of programming. We plan to be open seven days a week, Monday through Sunday, for a total of 68 hours. We're looking at a minimum census of 40 clients, and that will require three and a half full-time physicians, and then we can expand that to a level of eight physicians at a census of 100 to 110. I also know, based on previous meetings, Sally has discussed the inclusion of two probation officers on-site, and we have private offices available for each of them as well. Breathalyzers will be conducted daily, your analysis will be conducted on a randomized number system, and frequency will vary by program level. Each client will have an individualized service plan to address their needs, and they'll progress through the program moving from a higher level to lower levels of control based upon their progress in treatment, compliance with supervisory guidelines, completion of negative outcomes for drug and alcohol tests, meaning they have a negative drug and alcohol test, not necessarily a negative outcome. And again, there'll be space for probation officers to reside on-site if deemed appropriate by probation and parole, but obviously that falls on their side of the line. So risk and needs assessments. Evaluations will include the LSIR. I know that that is what we've been using in this county, and for those reasons, we want to be consistent with what's already being done. Also utilizing the Psychological Inventory of Criminal Thinking Styles and the Criminal Thought Inventory, which provides us a little bit extra information and allows us to do our treatment planning and systemic planning accordingly. Also, further evaluations when deemed appropriate would be the Pennsylvania Client Placement Criteria, the PCPC, which is designed to determine level of care for drug and alcohol testing. The PAI, a Personality Assessment Inventory, that can only be administered by a psychologist or psychology interns. Luckily, we have a psychology internship program, so if we have somebody that we're not really sure what's going on from a mental health perspective, they can come over and administer some additional psychological testing and inform what's going on for a much lower cost than what would ever be done anywhere else. The ASI, which is the Addiction Severity Index, and then any additional psychological testing as deemed appropriate, as deemed necessary. And again, we've been doing that at Crossroads for many years. When we have a client we're not really sure what's going on, we do additional testing and it helps inform their treatment and their treatment plan. So, as I mentioned, onsite programming, have case management for referrals and psychoeducational programming to address a whole host of issues associated with the offender. We also plan to have spiritual programming, so Living Better, which is a spiritual women's program, as well as Knights of the 21st Century, which is a spiritual men's program, and then 12-step meetings, and all of that will be something individuals can opt into. Level of Care Assessment, motivational interviewing, and then an individual growth planning to meet risk and needs of the offender. So our proposed location is right there on Cumberland Street. That's the building you may recognize, but I believe many years ago it was a bakery, and a pretty good one, as I've heard, but that was before my time. But that's our proposed location, and actually is much bigger on the inside than it is on the outside, it probably looks pretty small, but that's the facility on the inside. As you can see, we have a number of private offices, a number of restaurants, very large centered classroom, which can be divided up into smaller classrooms if necessary. We also plan to have a computer lab, and there's an entire basement floor. So depending on how this program grows, if it grows to the point where we need more space, we can navigate and expand downstairs. So we won't be limited by space in this particular location. And as mentioned previously, we do not have onsite parking, however, our 200 North 7th Street parking is about two blocks away, and there's unlimited parking there, so if they need parking, they can park and walk two blocks. It's also close to eight major bus routes, which I believe I have that here on the next page, but it's close to eight major bus routes. And additionally, we know many of these individuals don't always have driver's licenses, so having that access to public transportation is really important. So when it comes to safety and security solutions, we know that running a program like this, safety and security has to be our utmost priority, because again, as I mentioned, community safety is really important. Ongoing relationships with Lebanon City Police Department, we've had this for many years. Fortunately, we have numerous cameras outside of our various buildings now on a regular basis. If something occurs near one of our buildings, Lebanon County Police always show up and say, "Hey, could you show us your tapes from that night at this time to this time?" And we're always willing to do that, we've always worked closely with them. Cameras with offsite reporting, so if you burned the building to the ground, we would still have access to whoever was there. Metal detection and pat downs upon check-in. We also have a zero tolerance policy for onsite violence, dangerous behavior, threatening behavior, aggressive behavior. Panic buttons linked directly to the police station, security systems, and fire alarms and extinguishers. So the location, as I mentioned, eight major bus routes. It's a common police presence, it's very centralized. I was there to come here before this presentation today, it's a very short drive, very close. And we have location stability for the future. We recognize that we're there, we'll probably always be there. So the five programmatic principles. Essentially, what we want to start with is providing structures to these individuals, addressing their criminal thinking behaviors and their criminal behavior to varying degrees, and allowing them to internalize this process, so that they can be successful moving forward. I always joke to my clients and say, "Hey, I like you enough to hope I never see you again. We want you to take what you've learned here, go out into the world and do some good." Behavioral change, we're focusing on reinforcing positive behavior while addressing negative behaviors to lead to a substance-free and criminality-free lifestyle. Our clients need to be accountable for what they've done. It doesn't mean sort of chair of the head shaming our clients into submission, but it does mean at a certain point that the individual has to raise their hand and say, "Hey, I did this, I messed up, and these are the changes I'm going to make moving forward, so I don't fall back into the same old patterns." We want our clients to be independent. We know that these clients aren't coming through the door because they want to, they're showing up because they've been mandated through some form or fashion, whether it be a probation violation, I'm hoping to see some individuals' pre-sentencing as a diversion to that, but they're not here because they want to be. We want them to internalize that and, to some degree, develop a sense of ownership for their own futures and their own recovery. So yes, you're not here because you want to be, but how can you make the best of what you might see as a bad situation? And then last but not least, needs reductions. We want to reduce issues such as joblessness, homelessness, mental health or drug and alcohol problems, and anything that's functioning as a barrier to the success of our participants. So the program model has sort of 10 different steps or phases. I don't like listing this in discrete phases, because as we know, sometimes new issues or challenges will present themselves a little bit further down the line, so any of this can constantly be sort of circled back to or revisited. But essentially, starting with a risk and needs assessment, doing individualized programmatic planning, motivational interviewing and enhancement to facilitate buy-in. We want to have strategic referrals and targeted interventions to address the different needs that come up. We intend to use evidence-based programs and contingency management model of differential reinforcement, specifically with drug and alcohol offenders. Engagement of community support and resources, engagement of social support to establish a healthy support network of non-criminals, or those who do not engage in criminal behavior. So that might be an AA population, that might be getting them a sponsor, that might be reconnecting to an estranged family, that's what we're focusing on. Data tracking and analysis, and then utilizing those outcomes to inform and improve the process. Once this model is launched, we plan to continually be gathering more data and improving upon what we're doing to get better and better outcomes. We can only improve. Community service and restitution is very important to us. Renaissance Crossroads has worked in community service for many years, and we plan to also make that a part of the day reporting center. Community service of offenders will be a requirement for successful completion of the day reporting center, and participation in community service will provide a reduction in costs to the community that's difficult to quantify, I can't put a number on this. Ruthie, in a few minutes, we'll stand up and talk about costs, and unfortunately, that's one that we can't even put in here for you. But individuals involved in the DRC will also be required to be paying on their fines and costs, which provides another benefit to the community that we can't quite quantify. But for example, Renaissance Crossroads has done community service for 15 years, those are some examples. I know that there was some discussion before you all walked through the door about the St. Sees Festival. They set it up this week, they're going to go tear it down next week. So we work very hard kind of behind the scenes. We always say, "If they can pick something up and put it back down for you, that's our guy." We'll send them in there to help that population. I knew today they were up at Catra, which is a therapeutic riding program just outside of Harrisburg. Many years ago, my special needs brother used to ride up there, and they're going up there to shovel horse dung. Not always so excited about it, but that's giving back, that's helping the community, and it's helping some of the people that they may have harmed. So data tracking and outcomes measurement, we know that it's really important to be consistently collecting data. PA Counseling currently uses a proprietary EMR program and employs three programmers who can sort of tweak and change that to meet whatever needs we need met. Programming will include tracking outcomes throughout the course of involvement with the VRC and treatment at PA Counseling, and then we will also request data from other providers, but as you know, I can't promise we'll get it back, but we will at least request. And then statistical analysis and outcome reporting will follow up in six months, one year, and two years. These are some of the measures we hope to track. However, like I said, we have a lot of flexibility, we can really track pretty much whatever we want to look at, and we plan to do that, but these are some of the things that we will be looking at monitoring and measuring, and this is very consistent. I had the opportunity to review Sally's proposal for all the directions that probation is headed in the next couple of years, and I think we overlap pretty consistently with Data analysis and outcomes reporting. We plan to collaborate in research design and statistical analysis with Kutztown University, and de-identify data can be provided to Dr. Glenn Walters up there, I've been talking to him and communicating with him, very interesting guy, if you're ever bored and want to Google him, he's fascinating, but works in the Department of Corrections, Federal Department of Corrections for many years, developed numerous measures for tracking and measuring offenders over the course of time, and he has grad students and himself, he's always looking for new ways and areas to collect data and sort of improve upon our existing stuff, so I think that'll be a great relationship and collaboration to have moving forward. And last but not least, this will allow us to figure out what's working, rather than us reinventing the wheel or constantly putting time and effort and resources into something that's not being effective. So when it comes to staffing, we have program and case management. Mandy Newmaster would be very interested in providing some time over there. Also, Jeff Lembodin recently joined our team at Crossroads as a motivational interviewer and program consultant, and he would also be interested to help us launch this program and be a part of it, doing things right. Client services specialists, case managers, and then evaluators that can do all the assessments and any psychological testing that would be needed. When it comes to our staff, we're very committed to ensuring that they are trained and trained well. All new full-time staff receive no less than 30 hours of training within the first 30 days of employment. Oh, I'm sorry, 50 hours, 30 days, I apologize for that. 50 hours of training within the first 30 days of employment. They're trained in the PCPC and supervised until that training is completed, because it's offered by the state, and the state doesn't always work on our timeline, so sometimes we have to wait a few weeks until that training is offered. Staff are trained in our policy as procedures, as well as our model and philosophy of treatment. Jeff has also agreed to provide additional trainings on working with mentally ill and criminal populations to ensure that our staff are coming into it with a good head on their shoulders in regards to that. And then PA Counseling offers between two and four trainings a week, each training certified by the Pennsylvania Board of Social Workers and the American Psychological Association. Last but not least, employees are required to receive no less than 25 CEUs per year. So not only do they get the training, but they're required to get the training and they're paid and compensated for their time. On-site drug testing, we plan to have a breathalyzer, as well as randomized drug testing available. And we plan to also be able to do drug testing on evenings and weekends, and I know that's one of the current barriers that we're seeing, that offenders know that they're not going to be drug tested on evenings or weekends, so it's a good benefit. And to move into YPCS, we have a solid history of working with adult offenders within Lebanon County through the development of several successful programs, whether it be Crossroads, services to adult offenders in Lancaster, Redding, York, Harrisburg, Cumberland, Franklin, Adams, and Lebanon, and then services in several prisons, including here in Lebanon County Prison. We're skilled in working with offenders for successful reentry. Mandy Newmaster from Pennsylvania Counseling Services has been sitting on the reentry coalition since the very beginning, as well as the heroin task force, and we've been very involved and we're passionate about doing that. We also have the Recovery Center here in Lebanon County, which has allowed us to reach offenders as they're coming out the door, and there we have a returning citizen support group, so it's a program specifically for folks coming out of prison and receiving the support they need. We also have relationships developed over the years to facilitate appropriate connections to resources in Lebanon County, and we have experienced personnel to assist us in a successful startup. So we have Mandy, we have Jeff, we have people with a proven track record with the criminal justice community. I'm very excited about our relationship with Kutztown University. I believe that he will prove to be a tremendous asset to our program if and when we start. I also think that this will further support the LSIR findings, because he has over 250 publications through his research and work in Lebanon. We're local, we're community-centered, our employees live and work here, we value Lebanon County and its residents, and I think we've proven that in the last 33 years. We have a stable location and capacity for expansion, and we're skilled at starting up new programs. We've done it, we've done it time and time again. The question may come up, have we done a day reporting center in the past? No, we haven't. We haven't run a day reporting center, have been a part of a day reporting center, but we've started numerous successful, distinct, and unique programs over the last 15 years, and I'm confident that we can do it again here. So Lebanon County existing programming, this is what PCS currently offers. As I mentioned previously, individuals at the day reporting center are not required to use PCS as programming. So we know that for certain things, they would end up going to different agencies. What I can say is if they have a requirement, so if something shows up on the LSIR, a need that needs to be addressed, but they don't have insurance, or they don't qualify for Lebanon County funding for any reason, or things like that, we'll ensure that that need is met pro bono through Renaissance. So at that point, they wouldn't have provider choice unless another provider's willing to do it pro bono, but I'm guessing no one's going to be knocking down the door begging for that opportunity, but we would make sure that they're getting the need met. And here again is all of the different evidence-based programming that we use here at PCS, this is what we are familiar with and willing to utilize, and where I put those little stars, those are the types of things that we would plan to also implement at the day reporting center. However, we have a lot of other options. We're still exploring other choices in that regard. Okay, so as we mentioned previously, they have provider choice. However, at Renaissance, we do have dual licenses for both mental health and drug and alcohol problems. and drug and alcohol problems. And for clients who do not have medical assistance, insurance coverage, we have referral agreements with over 30-plus different insurance carriers and Lebanon Single County Authority. These are some of the psychoeducational programs that we plan to have at the Recovery Center and Crossroads, and we hope to also implement at the day reporting center. So criminality classes, life skills classes, AA and NA groups, employment vocational readiness, community reentry support groups, Life Ring, which is a 12-step secular model, Triple P, which is the positive parenting program, and other reentry programming. So this is stuff we're already doing, and we plan to also do at the day reporting center. And I will hand this over to Ruthie. Do you have any questions right now that this can go before we move on?
I'm just curious, Kim, on one point. And I know you had mentioned this before. You were talking about provision of pro bono services. And just so I understand, so we have someone coming through. There's a recognized need, and there's just no funding anywhere. Single County Authority won't provide it.
MHD won't cover it.
Yeah, nothing. Renaissance is going to provide it free of charge.
We're going to make sure they see it.
And then that would be the only instance where provider choice would not be available, unless some other provider would step to the plate and say, hey, we'll do the same thing. We will provide this counseling treatment, whatever it is, to fulfill this need without cost. They would, we would have choice, otherwise it's you, Vince.
Yes.
Okay.
And if anybody else... I know that in my, in my field, so as a psychologist, one of our tenants, so one of our big five, is beneficence, not maleficence. And one of the things that are sort of suggested in there is that we're supposed to do pro bono work from time to time. And so I think many of our staff, I mean, our staff is willing to do pro bono. I think for the, it's not often, it's not all the time. But we would ensure that these individuals, because why have to do the job?
And sometimes that pro bono is hard to see. For instance, at Crossroads, X percent of folks that use addiction services, okay, will eventually have a brain, potential brain damage as a result of their, of the choices that they've done. Now psychologically, a neurological psychological test is thousands of dollars. But because we have psychological interns who've all been trained on this, and we have supervisors that know how to do this, okay, and they need to supervise folks on it anyhow. We have all along, over the 15 years, and no one would know it, but we would go, wait a minute. I would say, I would say we need to get some neurological testing done because you can't be trying to get somebody to get somewhere when essentially you know from a biological perspective, they can't, and you have to figure out a way to work around that. And so that quiet pro bono work has been going on all the time. We're not real loud about it, but when, when, when somebody comes in and they need help, you can't create an idealistic viewpoint if they have brain damage as a result of their use. You have to teach them how to cope around, find where their strengths are, and help them cope.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to acknowledge the hiring of Jeff Imboden. I don't know how the honor feels, but I've always found him to be an excellent resource.
So far, he's been with us a little over a week, and he has really got me thinking.
It's that new.
Yes, that new. He's been with us a little over a week, and he's got me thinking and reaching out.
Didn't do anything to get fired in a week, I'm telling you.
He's really inspired me to, I don't know. He's given me a whole new perspective. And, you know, he was around when Crossroads started. And so it's just really exciting to have him say, well, we used to do it this way, and why don't you? You know, just challenging the, we go with the status quo, so to speak. Sometimes it keeps that fresh set of eyes, and he really, it's been awesome.
He's good.
Other questions concerning, anything that you can answer? All right, then I'm going to pass it off to Ruthie to talk about the financial piece.
Sure. Kim mentioned in passing the strategic plan. I don't know if you forwarded this to me or someone, but I read through your strategic plan for yours, I guess, the entire Pennsylvania adult regular life probation.
Yeah, it's not exactly mine.
Yeah. Although I gotta say, I kind of went, third page. I see Sally Berry write that, so, you know. And I was excited in reading it because, first of all, you got buy-in with us. But in, let's see, I think it's goal number two, where it talks about an evidence-based roadmap and all of the things that need to be in there. I just thought Lebanon County has a lot of these already well on their way. So not buttering you up, just saying, I recognize it. You've done a great job. And actually, you weren't there, but at the last, at the last reentry coalition, the judge pretty much said the same thing, too. That Lebanon County is moving in the right direction. This is where the state needs to go. And that we are just well on our way, as I was reading through all of these things. And that excited me because we buy in. Okay, so how does the county pay for the day reporting center without increasing taxes? There are a number of ways to look at savings and budget diversion and maybe, you know, returning citizens paying for part of it. But the way I approach this is, you know, what I hear when I go to the meetings in the reentry coalition is, we really have to educate the community. There's going to be resistance to an inflow, an influx of more and for a day reporting center like this. And so they're worried about their security and safety. But even more, if it costs them on top of that, I think there's additional resistance. And so that's the way I approach this. They don't want their taxes, I don't want my taxes increased for any reason. And taxpayers may find it difficult having individuals in the community who are currently in prison and us saying, wow, we're going to handle this a different way. So additional county funding designated over and above the current budgets for the criminal population, criminal justice population will probably not be popular. So my question was, how could existing budgets and the returning citizens themselves possibly pay for this? First of all, the prison budget, I combed through that and I asked some questions of the warden. And these are not just statewide. This comes from Lebanon County. Off-site medical hospital, mental health drugs, general and medical drugs onsite are approximately $6.34 per diem for those in need of treatment. I'm not saying per diem for everybody in there. There's a certain percentage that are in need of treatment. And other prison variable costs, which would be for anybody in the prison, are $2.08 per diem. So the variable cost of inmates likely to be day reporting center clients is $8.43, okay? So what that means is, if they're not in prison and it's the ones that need treatment, you're just diverting the budget. You're not costing more, you're just moving it from here to there and it's staying within the county. Reducing the inmate population also is going to help with correctional officer stress, contribute to less turnover. And if adding correctional staff and paying current overtime hours of straight time inclusive of benefits for added staff, and bringing down the budgeted overtime to about 33 hours a day, I asked questions about that, too, to cover unexpected emergencies and transportation. You've got to have some overtime. This could result in an estimated per diem savings of $1.13. So, you know, we, it's sort of a guess, but it actually is based on real data. The total variable cost the county could expect from a reduced prison population is $9.56 per diem if you're moving most of the ones over who need treatment. And so these savings can contribute directly to the per diem. And as I said, the majority of savings is clearly with those. There's also a wild card that, when I was asking questions, was talked about, and it really isn't included here. And it's the added savings for those who, sometimes the county experiences high spike costs for one or two individuals who have medical needs that can't be covered by insurance or whatever. And, you know, reducing the population that needs that kind of treatment is going to reduce the risk of that kind of event happening as well. But that's not included in these numbers. So as Kim said, we're going to be open 68 hours a week, seven days. That can be sliced and diced several ways. One way I saw it was 11 hours a day, Monday through Thursday, 12 hours on Friday because you're going to be open a little longer on Friday night, six hours on Saturday and Sunday, or if you want it 12-hour days for five days a week, and then it's four hours Saturday, Sunday. But what's important to us is having it open all seven days so that we are able to do those drug testing, the random testing, the breathalyzer, all the time. So at 15.25, which is the lowest rate, you need $111. It does go up to $28.25 per diem, and that's in your packet at a 40 minimum census. But let's talk about that 15.25. If you take that $9.50 prison diversion budget, what you're left over with is $5.69 to be covered by efforts of the returning citizens. So let's talk about some ideas there. I mean, I don't presume to know your budgets. This is just some thoughts I had. Unemployment rate is very low. We have, well, I know, first of all, we have trouble hiring. We have open positions all the time. We just don't, there's not enough people out there looking for jobs. And I think this is true across the board. PCS has employer relationships built, which we built through Crossroads. We get jobs for our Crossroads guys. The reentry coalition has employers' connections who routinely hire returning citizens. So I don't see finding them jobs as a, as a big thing. I think that if, we can assume that those who can work, pretty much most of them are going to be able to get a job. So if you look at the $5.69 per diem and you look at $111, if it's higher than that, but, but we're looking at right now the lowest per diem rate, you've got a gap of $230,500 for the year. So how, here's some ideas of how to pay for that, how they can pay, okay? I do know that the $10 a day is charged in prison. I've also heard or I've read this, that it's not often collected. So jobs provide the financial means for payment to the county for these bills that are there and that write the books. And I just made an assumption, let's just assume that there's just 134 of the census, 90-day average stay in the day reporting center, and they came from prison with a 60-day debt. You can put whatever assumptions you want into here, but let's say there's $90,000. And then the county can assess a daily per diem to those enrolled in the day reporting center. So let's assume 87% collections or 87% employed, $4 a day. That covers the gap. So it's just a couple of ideas to say, here are ways. The majority being budget diversion, but the rest of it being the citizens themselves. Potential future savings. The day reporting center will decrease the prison population, which should eventually result in other cost savings of more than the immediately diverted expenses. But I would imagine that that would mean closing down portions of the prison when things get really a whole lot, you know, the population is a whole lot smaller and you don't need as many probation officers, correctional officers. In summary, there are many benefits to the community for a day reporting center, which I have not talked about at all. You guys know what those are. But this is just from a financial perspective. I believe a reasonably low per diem is necessary in order to keep the burden off of the county's taxpayer and to place a portion of the cost on the returning citizens themselves. Do you have any questions?
I heard you talk about the 15.25 per diem, but I also heard you say it could go up to $28.25.
Right.
I want to make sure I'm not misinterpreting what you said. Does that mean that the additional $15 in round figures would also come from the client?
Where that would come, my hope is, okay, let me start back.
Can I just interrupt you, though? The $28.25 is, is at, saying we would have 40 people.
Only 40 people.
The 15.25 is if we have 111 or more.
111 people, right.
So, so, you know, it's not going up. The price isn't going up, it's going down dependent on the number of people in there.
Right.
Okay, so then the question would be directed to the courts and the probation. Can we get to the 111 to get that maximized or minimize price? Does it look like we'd only have a minimal number in a program?
Well, our hope is obviously that we could get to that number, but there's no real way of knowing without knowing if we're going to have buy-in from everybody that we need to have buy-in from. I mean, the court's support of this is never-ending and all extensive, just so you know. But it's not just the courts that are going to control where we are going to come up with folks to be in the day reporting center. We're going to need the cooperation of, let's say, the district attorney's staff. We're going to need the cooperation of defense attorneys. We're going to, to, you know, really have to mine that cooperation. If, using the DA's office as an example. If the district attorney would not be supportive of bail conditions, let's say, that would require someone to go to the day reporting center as a condition of having their bail lowered. For an individual that normally the bail would be higher, and they'd end up in jail because they couldn't post it. If we don't have that kind of cooperation from the district attorney's office, our MDJ's, police departments, let's say, there is going to be a limitation on the number of people that we can have in the day reporting center. Now, my, my hope is, and my belief is, that with adequate public relations of a positive nature from us, that that's not going to be an issue. But it could be an issue. So we're talking about what is the population that we're going to hit. I, I can't say with all certainty that it's going to be 111 or more or whatever. I hope it's going to be.
My belief is the same, that the buy-in will be, you know, pretty universal, at least based on conversations we've had with others. But do we know what percentage in other prisons that have day reporting, what percentage of the population is usually diverted to such a center?
That I don't know, but I wanted to say one more thing before it slips my mind as I get older. Another use that we want to make of the day reporting center is a group that is really ignored at this point. We just put them in jail, and that's folks that are in jail for not paying their child support. I believe that there is a significant number of people in that group that's going to be in the day reporting center because I think historically, they need the same kind of services. When we look at criminogenic needs, they reflect those same criminogenic needs. But when we're dealing with them in the child support category, we don't look at them in the same way as we do someone who's coming through the system for a crime. And I think we're going to have a significant number of people that would be diverted from jail, who are there because they don't pay child support, to be in the day reporting center to enhance their ability to actually pay that child support. So, you know, there are, there are different, I think, areas where people will come from. Violators or potential parole violators. Now, we have a group of people that, because of limited options, we just put them back in jail.
That's a big number.
Right. And we look at the day reporting center as being a diversionary possibility for those folks that serves two needs, really. Decreases the prison population. But again, because of their recognized criminogenic needs, we provide the servicing and the ability for them to address those needs. So when we're talking about possible populations.
Yeah, and are there any additional ones who don't qualify for jail? Maybe they are under supervision, heightened supervision, that are out on the streets that could benefit also.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
We mentioned previously bail supervision.
Yeah.
But then I'm back to my same question. Until it would build to the 111, there is a difference in money. Where does that come from? Does that come from the offender or not?
That would be up to, up to you, Vince.
We have to subsidize it or to get it.
This is the minimum we can start with, is 40 at that, at that rate. But what we would hope is we would give.
The price would drop a little bit.
To drop the price to this.
Cool. Have you considered a charge to the, to the participant? I know that's largely up to the court, but, you know, as a form of buy-in or ownership of the...
Right, yeah. You know, this, this assumes that maybe $4 is maybe, I mean, the assumptions there. You could put any number you want in, but that was just some ideas of how to cut, how to close that gap.
Is that enough for someone to, is it worth enough, I guess? You know, it's just, you know, is that easy to fold on or bail on versus a higher number of individuals in the center?
And then who collects the money?
Well, I would assume it is part of the county's system of collecting fees. Can you attach wages? Does the county attach wages?
Those that are in work release, yeah.
And these would be, if they have jobs, they're in that category, right?
Your honor, is that something that can be practically added?
Well, I think it's something that we can look at, but I think to have an expectation that somehow the budget of this center might be balanced on the backs of these folks somehow is a little bit unrealistic, I think, at the beginning. You know, we already charge them fifty dollars a month on a supervision fee. You know, they have all these other costs that they're paying, so to look at an individual offender as being a significant source of funding, I think, would be a mistake. I'm not saying that some kind of fee couldn't be charged, but I think kind of the ongoing type of fee, you know, again, I think looking at them as being the source of that is probably not a good thing at the beginning, anyway.
What's the rate of collection, assessment and collection of the, that daily rate?
Ten dollars a day, that's what I was thinking, up to ten dollars a day. You would think if they have a job, would be offset whether they're in prison or here.
But what, does anyone know what the rate of collection of that is? Because our office doesn't collect that.
City care, I don't know. I don't know how to handle that.
Anecdotally, I've heard it is very high.
If they're on work release, the checks go to the prison. They have, I would think, a pretty high collection rate.
For work release, you're talking about the room and board.
They don't have a high rate of people released.
There are two different charges.
I don't think their work release numbers are very high right now.
The work release is tied to their wage.
Right.
The ten dollars is a room and board that's charged to everyone that gets assessed, and it's owed when they're released.
So it would be interesting to hear what the, what the collection rate on that ten-dollar room and board is.
Yeah, the work release is about ten percent of the population or less.
I could just say, from, we do some of the collections of fees, and it's not good. We've had other programs to do it. We try, we do different things, but we have not had great success, and especially if they complete or go through the program, trying to recollect and not collecting it is not.
Introducing yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gordon May from Youth Advocate Programs. So we have programs, different places where we've done this, and the collections has not been great. It's really.
So we should look at the county role.
Yeah, I just, especially on the provider side, would be very difficult from a provider's side to do that and collect. It's not, not good.
Very good. Any other questions for PCST? Thank you very much for your presentation. Shall we take a public recess? We convene around two.
Official terminality.
Thank you very much.
That was an excellent presentation, by the way. You did a good job with that.
Thank you very much. I'm glad we had an opportunity to come back.
Ricky, thank you for coming back.
Hi, I haven't met. Gordon, are you located in Lebanon?
Harrisburg, actually, corporate office, we have offices.
Harrisburg, okay, okay.
Nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you. We met years ago.
I wasn't raped.
Did we really interview you?
Oh, get out of here. How many, that long ago?
Fifteen years ago.
Fifteen years ago? Oh, my goodness. Where did I interview you at?
At your actor house in your living room, I think.
Oh, really? That's kind of the style. That's kind of the style.
You said it started at that.
Well, yeah. Oh, really? Literally a strike. But interviews are.
Was anything else in the wrong way?
No, it was just you.
Just me. That is funny, that's great.
Yeah, no, it was funny. I hadn't seen you so long, I was like, that was the last time I seen you, so it was funny.
I've gotten better with it.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Good seeing you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
We should maybe touch base on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I can get you the table.
Okay.
Wonderful.
I would like to approach from different.
We're going to work with these.
You're going to set up a little store.
Okay, good. I just wanted to, I was appreciative.
Thank you so much.
I know that was just prepared. He's like, I'm trying to reservation.
Yes.
All done.
Let's be, yeah.
Break down some of these.
No, don't be mean.
Absolutely, no.
And I had no idea.
The advocate program, thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. It just so happens.
She's showing up.
You know our guy.
I'll talk to you, I'll get in touch with you.
Yeah, me too.
I'd love to have lunch or meet you off.
Is it acceptable for me to set the computer up over here? We didn't bring a clicker.
A clicker? Oh, yeah, whatever you have to do. That's fine.
Does Rick Luger still work there?
Yes, he does.
He does?
I saw Rick this morning. We, do you know about our greenhouse?
Yes.
Yeah, so he was out there with a group of kids, and they were fertilizing our tomato plants this morning.
What is the occupancy rate there and the maximum right now?
The occupancy rate?
In other words, if it's a forty max, are you at twenty or?
Oh, you referred to our day treatment program. The max is twenty.
Okay.
We're at fifteen right now. We had two boys graduate last night.
Okay.
So we're at, what is that, about seventy-five percent capacity right now?
So you're at seventy-five percent? And is it, is that an average capacity or?
Yeah, I think we hover around.
Around seventy-five percent?
Yeah.
I was wondering about that the other day.
If you ever interested in coming out and taking a look at, we routinely will host people to come out and eat dinner with the boys. It's always a good experience for the boys in the program to practice some of their social skills and an opportunity for you to see it firsthand.
Yeah, I was out at the opening, but I haven't been out since it's been in operation. Oh, the judge is coming back. I was wondering if he was going to catch this one or not.
We'll just switch. I'm going to move the button on here to make sure it's captured.
I'm just going to move because I haven't seen this one yet.
Well, I haven't either, so I'm going to move too. It keeps getting bigger and bigger.
Do you have handouts for us to follow up?
Yes.
If you didn't want to hand those out.
I'm getting ready, yeah.
Working on autograph Deshaun Kaiser football.
Oh, are you really?
Our assistant director in Lucas County, Ohio. He hosts a P-Wee school.
Oh, no kidding.
Runs into a routine.
Oh, gosh. Well, I have, I have several Notre Dame, autographed Notre Dame footballs. Mine are, like, I got a Boss Davy. That's probably worth about two cents.
Yeah, that's funny.
And my brother got me a commemorative football when we played Alabama in the national championship game in two thousand twelve, which was really, was really nice of him.
Try to forget about that.
Yeah. But when I, when I die, my sons can all fight over all the memorabilia that I have.
You have a lot, do you?
I have a lot of it, yeah. It's one of those kind of convenient kind of gifts that I get, you know, because I have, you know, what do I need kind of thing.
I should move your son's back.
You're fine, actually, you were perfect.
Yeah, you're better than top.
I just want to be talking. You're all right, all right. We'll just go wait a moment to.
I know.
Yeah. You're not. Sorry.
I get that reaction from people. I'm not really sure why.
I want to be judged behind me.
People just don't want to be in front of me if they don't want you to be in front of them.
They don't want to be talking if I talk. Yeah, they're standing there putting the horns on you.
It's good instinct.
Yeah.
Did you go through any Pokemon?
Oh, man.
I have no idea. I'm, I'm not even, like, acquainted with that.
Somebody just told me, somebody just told me about it the other day.
My son said that the police were telling him about how kids are literally walking out in the middle of the street with their parents.
There's been accidents, like, many people in cars and accidents.
I had somebody tell me a story about that right here in town, at an intersection here in town, where they almost hit somebody, and it was two, you know, not two little kids, two twenty-something people, just kind of walking out in the middle of the intersection.
Walking on the private property as well.
Well, I have to tell you that I have a lot of kids from Lebanon that do that to me anyway.
That's true. That's true. This was not related to school crossing.
You're talking about Joe? Misses?
Yeah. You're talking about this Pokemon Go craze or something?
Oh, yeah. It's crazy.
People are trying to capture these Pokémons. I was telling you about an incident where they almost hit some guy at an intersection walking out.
He's following his GPS.
Yeah.
Is that like a geocaching?
I'm in a real cultural void. It's none of this, late to none of this. I had no idea.
I don't know what you're missing.
Apparently not, yeah, yeah.
That jeopardizes your security.
Although, if you want me to, you know, my tireing about pedestrians who walk out in front of you all the time, if you feel like it, I'll be happy to take them out. I'm not going to chase them.
All of it after that.
Oh, yeah. But that's hard to understand pedestrians' militancy. So what if I have a red light, and you have the green light, so if you're walking in front of you, we have sent them that message. And not just kids.
All right, folks, we're going to reconvene and begin the presentation from these advocate folks, and select and introduce yourselves once more, and then we'll go along with your presentation.
Bob Swanson, I'm the executive director for Lebanon County YAP.
Gordon May, I'm the vice president for Youth Advocate Programs in Pennsylvania, Ohio, and Maryland. And I will get started. First, I just wanted to give a little backdrop on Youth Advocate Programs and how we got started. It's kind of interesting, in nineteen seventy-five, we actually brought youth out of adult prisons in Harrisburg. There was a overpopulation, so if you've been around, there were four hundred youth in the prison. And how YAP, YAP at its start, we brought all those children out of prison, adult prisons, back in the community systematically. So it's interesting, bringing us here today, we're truly doing the same thing, looking at alternative placement for adults incarceration because of the current overpopulations in our systems and growth. So we started right there, and as you can see, we've grown all throughout the country in some national programs as well, specifically in Pennsylvania. We're in twenty-two counties, and our corporate office is right down the road in Harrisburg, so I'm in Harrisburg in Lebanon, working with Bob, as well as other places, including Toledo, Ohio, and Baltimore City on specific populations dealing with youth that have been incarcerated and the juvenile justice system. First, I want to read our mission, because I think it speaks directly to the day reporting center. Community-based alternatives for individuals subject to compulsory care, so communities have safe, effective, and cost-effective alternatives to residential placement and incarceration. It's our mission, this is what we do. I mean, all our programs are geared right to everything we've been talking about here today, so we're really excited about it. And then a little backdrop for me, as I started out as a frontline worker for YAP. Actually, Roy had interviewed me way back fifteen years ago, which was very interesting when I just got started in the, in the business. And I worked directly as an advocate with juvenile probation, working with youth and families and adults who've been incarcerated. And then kind of, it's sixteen, seventeen years now with YAP. I got promoted, I was assistant director and the director of programs. And then I got promoted to a national position, and I did this all over the country. So I've developed and operated programs in Texas, Arizona, Las Vegas. I would do the implementation operations of a set of programs like this, and they were helping mental health programs. Luckily, go ahead.
I was just going to say, just for me, you're called Youth Advocate, we're talking about adult programs. I assume you're going to be talking to us about what adult programs.
Exactly, exactly. So that's why we're in the Youth Advocate and Adult Services, and what I would say is, with the Youth Advocates, we serve the families as well, so we're working with a lot of those individuals in adult programs. And we get, you know, that's been our name for so long, we get pigeonholed into that sometimes?
Yes, yeah.
And I even forget to add the adult services, because that is a big part.
Well, I pigeonholed you there, too.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
We pigeonhole ourselves, so you have to do it for us. So where's I, and then I, so we started with those programs, and I was the director, and then I did the national work, and then three years ago, a position opened up, same level, and I was sick of flying a hundred thousand miles a year. And I have a family, a nine-year-old and a four-year-old, and I was fortunate enough to be able to get the same position, now doing the same thing back in Pennsylvania, Ohio, Maryland, where I initially started, which I'm very happy, and I've been working with Bob with for a long time now. There you go. So first thing, I want to talk about all the services that we provide. Of course, you know about our juvenile services that we work with Sally on. So this is alternative placement, reentry, anything with probation, we provide those services. Child welfare, we have FSP, Family Support Program, working with kids that have been abused, at risk of being abused. We work with all that population as well, and the families, mental health, adults, psychiatric, psychological concerns. We work with that whole population in all of our different programs throughout the country, in Lebanon, Pennsylvania. Autism, we're looking at the autism services, specifically provided through our BHRS, and working with families in a relationship model that also incorporates some of the ADA principles of applied behavioral analysis. So we work with those individuals. Developmental disabilities, this is with adults. This is actually a very niche population in the criminal justice system when individuals get put into the system that have a developmental disability, a very hard population to work with. We work with them coming out of incarceration in our programs, and have funding through waivers to work with that population that really have criminogenic needs, but also developmental disabilities, which makes for a very tough population to serve that we work with here. Workforce development, this is a huge one that will apply to all your adult services, GED readiness. We have our YAP Works, our own curriculum, which we'll talk more about. So we're really working on building a workforce so people can get back to the community. Education, especially with youth, and even with our adult population, learning a skill, getting them involved in education, whether it's cutting hair, mechanics, developing those relationships in the community so we can support individuals getting involved. And the last one, adult services. So anything around the adult services, of all these, we've worked with those youth in Day Reporting Center, and specifically in other states that we have and I've worked with, we call them life coaches, and we've had second chance dollars, I don't know if you know about that, and have had great success rates, doing a program just like the Day Reporting Center. And that segues into Bob talking more specific about Lebanon, as that was a general overview of our YAP services.
Again, I'm Bob Swanson, the executive director for Lebanon YAP. I started at YAP in two thousand as an advocate while I was a college student, working with kids and families involved with juvenile probation, children in youth services, and then continued over the last sixteen years, working with YAP in a variety of capacities, serving as assistant director, program director. For five years, I oversaw the implementation of our training program nationally, and then starting in December of two thousand fourteen, I began my current position overseeing all of our operations in Lebanon County. Just giving you a little bit of an overview of our experience in Lebanon County. So we actually opened our first office in Lebanon County in nineteen ninety-nine, providing behavioral health and rehabilitation services. These are services for children.
Several Notre Dame, autographed Notre Dame footballs. Mine are like, I got a Boss Davy. That's probably worth about two cents.
Yeah.
And my brother got me a commemorative football when we played Alabama in the national championship game in 2012, which was really, was really nice of him.
Try to forget about that.
Yeah. But when I, when I die, my sons can all fight over all the memorabilia that I have.
You have a lot, do you?
I have a lot of it, yeah. It's one of those kind of convenient kind of gifts that I get, you know, because I have, you know, what do I need? Kind of that.
I should maybe reverse on that.
You're fine, actually, you were perfect.
Yeah. More is better than talk.
I just want to be talking. You're all right, all right. We just go wait a moment to.
I know.
Yeah. You're not. Sorry.
I get that reaction from people, I'm not really sure why.
I don't want to be judged behind me.
People just don't want to be in front of me if they don't want you to be in front of them.
I don't want to be talking if I'm talking.
Yeah, you're standing there and putting the horns on you.
It's good instinct.
Yeah.
Did you go through any Pokemon?
Oh, man.
Are there any?
I have no idea. I, I'm, I'm not even like acquainted with that.
Somebody just told me, somebody just told me about it the other day.
My son said that the police were telling him how kids are literally walking out in the middle of the street with their phone.
There's been accidents, like many people in cars and accidents.
I had somebody tell me a story about that right here in town, at an intersection here in town where they almost hit somebody. And it was two, you know, not two little kids, two twenty-something kids, just kind of walking out in the middle of the intersection.
Walking on the private property as well.
Well, I have to tell you that I have a lot of kids from Lebanon who do that to me anyway.
That's true, that's true. This was not related to school crossing.
You're talking about Joe? Nissick's?
Yeah. You're talking about this Pokemon Go craze.
Oh, yeah. It's crazy.
People are trying to capture these Pokémons. I'm just telling you about an incident where they almost hit some guy at an intersection, walking out.
He's following his GPS.
Yeah.
Is that like a geocaching?
I'm in a real cultural voice.
You don't know about Pokemon?
I've read the done of this, I had no idea.
I don't know what you're missing.
Apparently not, yeah, yeah.
That jeopardizes your security.
Although if you want me to, you know, my tireing about pedestrians who walk out in front of you all the time, if you feel like it, I'll be happy to take them out. I'll go on a tireing, I'm not going to chase them.
All this after that.
Oh, yeah. But that's horrible, pedestrians, that militancy. So what if I have a red light and you have the green light, so if you're walking in front of you, we have sent them that message. And that's just kids.
All right, folks, we're going to reconvene and begin the presentation from these positive folks and select and introduce yourselves once more and then we'll go along with your presentation.
I'm Bob Swanson of the executive director for Lebanon County YAP.
I'm Gordon May, I'm the vice president for youth advocate programs in Pennsylvania, Ohio, and Maryland. And I will get started. First, I just wanted to give a little backdrop on youth advocate programs and how we got started. It's kind of interesting, in 1975, we actually brought youth out of adult prisons in Harrisburg. There was a overpopulation, so if you've been around, there were four hundred youth in the prison. And how YAP, YAP at its start, we brought all those children out of prison, adult prisons, back in the community systematically. So it's interesting, bring us here today, we're truly doing the same thing, looking at alternative placement for adults incarceration because of the current overpopulations in our systems and growth. So we started right there, and as you can see, we've grown all throughout the country, and some national programs as well, specifically in Pennsylvania, we're in twenty-two counties. And our office is right down the road in Harrisburg, so I'm in Harrisburg in Lebanon, working with Bob, as well as other places, including Toledo, Ohio, and Baltimore City, on specific populations dealing with youth that have been incarcerated and the juvenile justice system. First, I want to read our mission, because I think it speaks directly to the Day Reporting Center. Community-based alternatives for individuals subject to compulsory care, so communities have safe, effective, and cost-effective alternatives to residential placement and incarceration. It's our mission, this is what we do. I mean, all our programs are geared right to everything we've been talking about here today, so we're really side of the valley. And then a little backdrop for me, as I started out as a frontline worker for YAP, actually Roy had interviewed me way back fifteen years ago, which was very interesting when I just started, got started in the, in the business. And I worked directly as an advocate with juvenile probation, working with youth and families and adults who've been incarcerated. And then kind of it's sixteen, seventeen years now with YAP, I got promoted, I was assistant director and the director of programs. And then I got promoted to a national position, and I did this all over the country. So I've developed and operated programs in Texas, Arizona, Las Vegas. I would do the implementation operations of a set of programs like this, and they were helping mental health programs. Luckily, go ahead.
I was just going to say, just for me, you're called youth advocate, we're talking about adult programs. I assume you're going to be talking to us about what adult programs.
Exactly, exactly. So that's why we're in the youth advocate and adult services. And what I would say is with the youth advocates, we serve the families as well, so we're working with a lot of those individuals in adult programs. And we get, you know, that's been our, our name for so long, we get pigeonholed into that sometimes. And we, and I even forget to add the adult services, because that is a big part.
Well, I pigeonholed you there too.
Yeah. Now, we pigeonhole ourselves, so you don't have to do it for us. So where's I, and then I, so we started with those programs, and I was the director, and then I, I did the national work. And then, three years ago, a position opened up, same level, and I was sick of flying a hundred thousand miles a year. And I have a family, a nine-year-old and four-year-old, and I was fortunate enough to be able to get the same position, now doing the same thing back in Pennsylvania, Ohio, Maryland, where I initially started, which I'm very happy, and I've been working with Bob with for a long time now. There you go. So first thing, I want to talk about all the services that we provide. Of course, you know about our juvenile services that we work with Sally on, so this is alternative placement, reentry, anything with information, we provide those services. Child welfare, we have FSP, Family Support Program, working with kids that have been abused, at risk of being abused, we work with all that population as well, and the families. Mental health, adults, psychiatric, psychological concerns, we work with that whole population in all of our different programs throughout the country, and in Lebanon, Pennsylvania. Autism, we're looking at autism services, specifically provided through our BHRS, and working with families in a relationship model that also incorporates some of the ADA principles of applied behavioral analysis. So we work with those individuals. Developmental disabilities, this is with adults, this is actually a very niche population in the criminal justice system when individuals get put into the system that have a developmental disability, a very hard population to work with. We work with them coming out of incarceration in our programs, and have funding through waivers to work with that population, that really have criminogenic needs, but also developmental disabilities, which makes for a very tough population to serve that we work with here. Workforce development, this is a huge one that will apply to all your adult services, GED readiness, we have our YAP Works, our own curriculum, which we'll talk more about. So we're really working on building a workforce so people can get back to the community. Education, especially with youth, and even with our adult population, learning a skill, getting them involved in education, whether it's cutting hair, mechanics, developing those relationships in the community, so we can support individuals getting involved. And the last one, adult services. So anything around the adult services of all these, we've worked with those youth in Day Reporting Center, and specifically in other states that we have and I've worked with, we call them life coaches, and we've had second chance dollars, I don't know if you know about that, and have had great success rates, doing a program just like the Day Reporting Center. And that segues into Bob talking more specific about Lebanon, as that was a general overview of our YAP services.
Again, I'm Bob Swanson, the executive director for Lebanon YAP. I started at YAP in two thousand as an advocate while I was a college student, working with, with kids and families involved with juvenile probation, children in youth services. And then continued over the last sixteen years, working with, with YAP in a variety of capacities, serving assistant director, program director. For five years, I oversaw the implementation of our training program nationally. And then, starting in December of 2014, I began my current position overseeing all of our operations in Lebanon County. Just giving you a little bit of an overview of our experience in Lebanon County. So we actually opened our first office in Lebanon County in 1999, providing behavioral health and rehabilitation services. These are services for children with complex mental health needs. It was previously funded through MA, now our primary funder for that program is Perform Care. In two thousand, we began a contractual relationship with the county, helping to reduce residential placement rates of kids involved with juvenile probation and children in youth services, using our core advocate program. Really what that is, is we create a good match between a at-risk youth and their family, and an advocate. An advocate is simply a highly trained and supervised, trusting, caring adult from the community, that is culturally competent and aware of the community resources. So it's very often that those advocates reside in the same neighborhoods as our kids. It's our goal that they speak the same language, very proud to tell you that our staff is very reflective of the population we serve here in Lebanon County. We have fourteen different staff, they're bilingual, they've worked across a variety of different program levels and, and layers of our local agency. In twenty, sorry, two thousand and three, we started providing community-based detention services to the county. This was kids that were in a pre-adjudication status with the courts, and this was an alternative to them actually being sent to juvenile detention, where we would provide intensive daily supervision using our advocates in conjunction with electronic monitoring. In two thousand and five, specifically with children in youth services, we began providing community reintegration services, again, to address the need for alternatives with kids with complex needs, alternatives to residential care. So this is using our core advocate model. In addition, we also utilize a master's level therapist that provides intensive supervision to the advocate, as well as individual and family treatment to the family. That same program in two thousand and seven became eligible for funding through medical assistance program as well, we call that our family support program. In two thousand and nine, to address the rising truancy rates in Lebanon County, using our core advocate model, began providing truancy intervention services to children in youth services. These are kids that they are not meeting compulsory school attendance requirements, and this is very problematic for them educationally, it's very problematic for the families, and, and we worked with these families to identify what are the barriers to school attendance. How do we handle those barriers? In 2014, we opened our juvenile day treatment program, which operates in 1691 Grace Avenue, many people know that as the former Youth for Price Building. And this is a program where we're working with juveniles that are at very high risk of reoffending. This program is an alternative to them being in residential care. This program, we utilize a variety of evidence-based curricula, and it's highly structured to meet the treatment needs and also the supervision needs of these young people. And then this past March, we opened our Greenworks program. This is building on our garden program that we've been doing for the last fourteen years with youth, and, and what we did is we constructed a thousand-square-foot commercial greenhouse. It's filled with mums right now, we'll be planting poinsettias next month, but this is an opportunity to provide young people with some work experience. Many of them have very little insight into the world of work. And also, for some young people with complex financial needs, this is almost a small business, where we have the opportunity to provide select youth with employment. And it's our intentions here, and probably in the next month, to be hiring our first kid in that program. Very happy to tell you, last year, eighty-seven percent of the kids that were referred to us by Lebanon County Children and Youth in Lebanon County Juvenile Probation completed our program successfully. Meaning that they were able to complete the services, make it to the end of service, graduate from services without re-entering residential care. So, you know, we're here to talk about our proposal for a day reporting center. Lebanon County has a need to reduce incarceration rates, and so this program that we're proposing is an alternative to incarceration. It follows three levels of service. The first one would be the intake and assessment phase of service, followed by an intensive treatment phase, and it would end with an aftercare and a graduation phase of service. The general principle of this, this program is to address those specific criminogenic needs of each probationer that may increase their risk of reoffending, while at the same time providing a structured program that's going to promote community safety. Our overarching goal is that we would ensure that seventy-five percent of all probationers that are referred to this program are not incarcerated. So in order to achieve that, there's a number of objectives that we would need to meet. So, in, in order to achieve that, we believe we need to serve each probationer for a range varying between a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty days. And we would be equipped to serve between a hundred to a hundred and fifty probationers at any given time. We would want to identify, you know, what are the specific needs, what are the factors that increase the risk of probationer recidivism? So every young, I'm sorry, every individual that would come through our programs, we would complete a comprehensive assessment. We'll talk more about what those assessments may look like here further in the presentation. The assessments that we would be using would be the Level of Service Index Revised and the Adult Needs and Strengths Assessment. Our third objective would be to connect probationers and their families to community resources. Similar to PCS, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, there are community resources in the community that we would not be interested in replicating, instead we would be interested in promoting an already existing community capacity. So a large part of our services would be that case management piece, where we would connect people to resources that are going to meet the needs that are identified in their, their assessments. Our next objective would be to focus on educational, vocational, and life skills and support services, largely through our case management functions. So everybody that is, that is referred through our assessment, based on the needs that would be identified, would be connected to those, those outside services. Some examples of those may be GED preparation, English as a second language, workforce development, that sort of thing. And then a big part of it is to, yes?
May I ask, I'm having a real hard time following this in your presentation. Do I have the right materials?
You do, you do, we're jumping around a little bit. There's a, there's a chart in there. That chart right there, on the left-hand side, outlining some of these objectives we're talking about. The evidence-based curriculum that we would be using, we're going to talk about this in a lot of detail later on. Everybody that comes through the program is going to participate in various types of evidence-based curricula, and many probationers would participate in multiple curricula. So some examples of these would be cognitive behavioral interventions for offenders, cognitive behavioral interventions for substance abuse, parrying inside out, what we call carry guides, and we'll outline these in a lot more detail here shortly. And then we want to provide a setting where therapy, whether it be family, group, individual treatment can take place. So everybody's going to be connected with various forms of treatment. We largely subscribe to cognitive behavioral therapy as the guiding treatment modality, and this would all be supervised by a program director who's a licensed master's level therapist that's going to provide that, that clinical oversight of the treatment. And then reducing recidivism in the program, as I stated, our goal is that seventy-five percent of the individuals completing the program won't be incarcerated while they're participating in the program.
Do you know what the averages are of that? Seventy-five percent, assuring seventy-five percent, is that something in the overreaching there?
So, well, I mean, right now, we're, we're, we have an eighty-seven percent success rate with juveniles, which is very high for juveniles. And based on our success with juveniles, we do believe that we can have that type of success with, with adults.
That's, I'm sorry, that's year three into the program, so we've watched the success rate grow in the last three years, and we're projected to be at that this year so far.
And also.
But that's not, I mean, just to be fair, that's not where we started, year one or year two, but there's also been a lot of changes since year one.
And our other program, it was in New York State through a second chance program, we were in the high eighties, if not low nineties, with the success rate at completion of the program. So we did work with the same population and had a really high success rate, and we kind of tout that program as well.
And now, when you're saying.
Sorry, can we go ahead?
No, go ahead.
No, you can go, but then I'll ask one.
When you're saying success rate, you're looking at program completion, you're not looking at, you know, recidivism two years out?
Not two years, I don't know, so that's.
Six months out.
Yeah, so.
That was going to be my question, that actually would take you back on that. We're talking about that being the completion of the program rate, but long-term, what are we talking about in terms of?
Exactly, and then to, to just add to that in regards to our outcomes, which we talked a little bit about, we have invested resources in that, and the issue we've had is contacting the youth. So we were, six months to a year ago, a twenty percent hit rate on post-discharge, six months to twelve months, just on finding people, it's been really difficult. We just, our CEO just let us now allow for staff to find and start to try to get more of that post-discharge information, have a better number. But right now, when we're tracking it, the hit rate's so low at that twenty percent, we don't feel like we're getting great data because we're not getting everybody. So we are investing the resources to address that, and we, you know, we, it's like, you're doing so much, you can only spend so much time trying to chase someone down to get them to answer their criticism and everything. And we work with Sally on different projects to try to get that information, to compare our data, say, hey, where is this youth now, where are these people now as well? But that is, that is an issue, and I think every provider struggles with that one.
All right, so as I mentioned, cognitive behavioral therapy is really our guiding treatment modality. Cognitive behavioral therapy is, is very effective in, in changing behavior, largely because it focuses on cognitive restructuring, changing thoughts and attitudes. Many of the individuals that we serve through Day Reporting Center are going to have very antisocial thoughts, beliefs, orientations, and in order for them to change the behavior, they need to change their thinking. And cognitive behavioral therapy is designed to do, in fact, that. A lot of research that supports the effectiveness of CBT, the National Institute of Justice has found this to be significantly more effective than punishment. And, and it's effective with juveniles, and we've been using this in our, our day treatment center for juveniles, that's the guiding treatment modality there. They're highly effective there, the research says it's also effective with adults in multiple settings, where these individuals are not returning to the system because we're seeing significant skill improvements across a number of domains. So the, the program components that we'll outline here are really rooted in research and, and principles of risk and need and responsiveness. Basically, what this means is, the research tells us that the most resources should be allocated to those probationers with the highest needs, and that's why the assessment is so important, so we can determine what those needs are. But those, those probationers with the highest needs would receive the highest amount of support, and that, really, the needs that we would be focusing on are those dynamic criminogenic needs that we do have an opportunity to influence and, and to address those needs, so that we're reducing the, the likelihood of reoffending. So the components that allow us to do that is, is that assessment phase. So everybody who enters the program, and we're going to do a comprehensive assessment, and, you know, one of the domains that we might look at, for example, would be, you know, the, the individual's orientation or attitude, whether it's pro-social or anti-social. If, if an individual is determined to be at a high risk of, of offending as a result of their attitude or their orientation, well, then we want to, in our individualized service planning, make sure that, that we have a plan to address that. And, and so part of that would be the evidence-based curricula that we've identified. One of the curriculums we use is cognitive behavioral interventions for offenders, which largely focuses on an individual's attitude or orientation, trying to change that. It's very much a dynamic need, that we can improve the outcomes relating to that. There'd also be specific interventions that, that our staff would utilize. Part of the training our staff undergo is what's called core correctional practices, which provides a lot of real-time interventions, coaching, feedback, that our staff can be utilizing. This is all supported through the University of Cincinnati Corrections Institute, we have a contractual relationship with them that supports us in providing this evidence-based curriculum and these specific interventions with model fidelity for, for, you know, the, the duration of the individual's participation in the program. And then case management, and, and so, and we'll talk more about that case management. But many of the individuals that, that we serve are going to have ongoing needs that are going to extend beyond their participation in the treatment program. For example, a psychiatric need, or GED, a lot of, a lot of individuals who participate in the GED preparation program, it's more than a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty days, they may be in that program for a year. So the case management piece is getting them connected to those supports, monitoring the effectiveness, and providing any technical support to those individuals, should there be barriers to accessing those supports. The assessments that we will use are the LSIR and, and the ANSA. So the LSIR is largely focused on the criminogenic needs. So we're going to look at, at a variety of domains, the individual's criminal history, education, and employment, finances, that family, marital domain is a big one, accommodation, leisure and recreation, their companions, drug and alcohol problems, emotional and personal issues, and, and their attitudes and orientation. And then the adult needs and strengths from the ANSA assessment allows us to look beyond that, so we'd be looking at their life domain functioning. What are their strengths, and I think that's really important, that we're identifying the strengths, because these are the resources that are going to support that individual from, from returning to the system upon successful completion. So we'd be looking at, you know, their family members, their resources, their knowledge, their skills, all of that would be, be as important as assessing what their needs are. Acculturation, the behavioral health needs, risk behaviors, and then the caregiver needs and strengths.
Just ask a question, and maybe I missed, good judge, do you have input into the, through sentencing, if you want to require certain treatment for financial, you know, if it's someone that's behind in their pay? So that they can get some literacy in that area, and you can impose that on them through sentencing, or is this all through whatever their assessment tool tells them that they need, how's that work?
I, I've never done that specifically as a condition of anybody that I've ever seen, to say, you need to go to some kind of financial planning classes to, or budgeting classes, or those kinds of things. I've never imposed that as.
As far as day reporting, would that be some different?
Well, well, I, I would hope that we would provide those kinds of benefits to folks that we've assessed. I, I don't know, historically in the past, I, I don't think that, that we've assessed people to determine whether or not they needed budget counseling as part of their supervision, but I think that's something that we would be doing now, when we're at the LSIR or at the.
Yeah, and I think the recommendation there is to really encompass all those services in the Day Reporting Center, that you could order them as a condition to the Day Reporting Center.
Well, and, and in fairness, my expectation is, if, if I condition someone to the Day Reporting Center, the folks at the center are going to tell me what they need. It's not me telling them necessarily what they need, that's the idea of the assessments. You know, so we really identify what they need and we address those needs. So for the court to specifically say, I want this person to do this, would probably be an unusual circumstance, I think.
And historically, we've, we've had some good resources in the community to address financial literacy, and, and those are the, the resources we want to connect people to, and if.
So you wouldn't be doing that training yourself?
If, if there was a need, you know, is it possible that we would be taxing existing resources? You know, would we be referring a lot of people to, say, the Community Action Program for Financial Literacy Training, and taxing their resources? If that would be the case, then we'd have to work on developing our own capacity to provide those interventions. But again, we want to really focus on tapping into the existing capacity within the community. Part of it is helping probationers learn how to navigate through the community and to meet their needs, and I think that's one reason why it would be very important that we be identifying some of these resources in the community, helping people connect to those.
And a perfect example of that is what just happened. And a perfect example of that is what just happened, I would say, recently with the IU-13. And through the Reentry Coalition and John inviting Youth Advocate to be part of that coalition, they became acquainted with Charlotte?
Christine Davis.
Christina from IU-13. And we ended up being able to tap in on a resource for our Day Treatment Program for the juveniles with the educational piece that they provide. So instead of like having them provide a whole nother service and taking it away from a provider in the community that's already providing it, we was like, we introduced them together, and now they're working with them to provide that, our program. And I think that's what you're talking about.
They come to our space and we will offer them space.
And a great example of that would be currently, we have a number of young people from our Day Treatment Program that our staff are bringing to the IU-13 for GED classes multiple times per week. And the beauty of that is many of these young men are going to be continuing to participate in these GED classes even after they graduate from our services. And so we're teaching them to connect to that community resource. And I think that's a really important aspect of helping people not just complete a program successfully, but then to sustain that success beyond their involvement.
Yeah, it's really cornerstone of our program. We have not given people the resources to help themselves when they leave the program. We failed them. I mean, they really need to know everything out there, because we're not long-term. We're not gonna be there for, you know, one, two years. They need to have these things in place.
Right. So through that assessment, we help each probationer. We use what we call a family team approach. And so it would be Day Reporting Center staff, it would be the probationer, their probation officer, their family members. We would work jointly with them to develop a meaningful, individualized plan that's addressing the needs that are identified through the assessment. So some of that may be programming that we're providing, some of it's going to be making those community referrals. What we're really focusing on, and the research supports this idea, is for a day reporting experience to be successful for a probationer, we really need a dosage of about two to three hundred hours of intervention. And so what that breaks down to over a four to six-month period, depending on the specific level of risk, is about twelve to twenty hours per week of just participating in treatment. So that's really what we would be focusing on. An additional part of that assessment is identifying, are there safety issues? And are there ongoing crises that this individual may be experiencing? What are the known triggers that cause this person to escalate into a crisis? And what risky situations may be occurring in their lives that may prompt a crisis? And then we work with them to identify a realistic crisis plan, to educate them on how to manage that crisis, but also to gain some insights from that individual, how we can support them with that crisis. And so part of our services then would be providing 24/7 crisis support. We have staff on call. You know, individuals are required to participate in the Day Reporting Center, but they should also have some meaningful choices. And how is that experience gonna look for them? If we want this to be a meaningful transformative experience that it's intended to be. So we would provide us a flexible schedule of programming that supports ongoing involvement and other responsibilities that an individual may have. We want to be able to provide, we want to be able to provide space in their life to meet their employment obligations and their family obligations. So those same services that we're gonna offer in the morning, we're also gonna offer those in the evening, so that people can manage all those priorities. We also want to partner with family members, and we want to promote each individual's voice, choice, and ownership in the development and the implementation of their individualized plan. So looking at some of the specific interventions that we would provide. So we talked about, we could use an evidence-based curriculum. So I want to provide an overview for you, what these would be. So we use cognitive behavioral interventions, a comprehensive curriculum. This broadly targets all of an individual's criminogenic needs. So this is a cognitive behavioral approach that teaches people to manage risk behaviors. In this, we would specifically focus on skill building. We target motivation, cognitive restructuring, emotional regulation, problem solving, success planning. We also have cognitive behavioral interventions for substance abuse. And so this is for individuals that would be assessed at a high risk of substance abuse. And really, it's designed to teach people new strategies that are gonna help them from having a drug or alcohol relapse. Parenting Inside Out, this is an evidence-based parenting skills training program that's specifically developed for parents that are involved in the criminal justice system. They have very unique needs. And helping them to nurture and connect to family members. GAAP Works is a curriculum that we've developed at GAAP, and this is an individualized, strength-based learning system that combines cognitive behavioral therapy, motivational interviewing, and provides opportunities for experiential, project-based learning. And it gives folks some local labor market information and understanding of what is actually occurring in the world of work. We find that a number that we work with really don't have any understanding of what are the expectations of the workforce. The CARRY Guides allow us to individualize treatment based on the identified criminogenic needs from the assessment. And so some of the criminogenic needs that we would focus on through the CARRY Guides, and we could do this individually, we can do this in small groups, would be anger, antisocial associates, antisocial thinking, emotional regulation, empathy, engaging pro-social individuals, interpersonal skills, involving your family, moral reasoning, things like that. And then the final two that we have listed up here are part of our aftercare phase of services. So the advanced practice, this is something that people would participate in, really in the final thirty days of their day recording experience, after they've completed all their other programming. And really, what this focuses on is a lot of role play, a lot of experiential learning that's focusing on more advanced situations. And then the relapse prevention, this is something that we're using in our Day Treatment Program with the juveniles right now, and we've had a lot of success with it. So prior to graduation from the program, an individual has to submit a relapse prevention plan. So this particular curriculum helps them to prepare for that. And so their relapse prevention plan that they present at graduation is, what are the risk factors that led to my system involvement? What are the gains that I've made through my treatment? What risky situations are still on the horizon out there for me? And what is my plan for managing those risky situations moving forward? And upon completion of that, then they're formally going to graduate from the program. And we focus on graduation as an alternative to discharge, because graduation success suggests the successful completion of something. And I think it's important that we recognize that treatment is very hard work for an individual. And when you successfully complete that treatment, we need to recognize that successful completion. And it creates a reference point for success. That reference point for success, along with all the new skills acquired through treatment, is going to help sustain people's success beyond their involvement in the program. So we feel very strongly about this graduation piece. I mentioned the University of Cincinnati Corrections Institute. We already have an existing contractual relationship with them. They provide a lot of technical support to our juvenile day treatment program, and we continue utilizing them in the administration of the Day Reporting Center. So we contract with them for technical support. Largely, our interest is maintaining model fidelity and making sure that we are delivering services as they are intended through the treatment model. A big part of that includes training. So in addition to our own training requirements through the University of Cincinnati, Day Reporting staff will participate in close to three weeks of training. It's a pretty intensive training process. And then that same trainer who trains our staff is going to be returning to the program routinely to observe the administration of the evidence-based curriculum and to provide a lot of coaching, feedback, and supervision to make sure that we are delivering these services with fidelity. The case management piece, we've talked a lot about that. Each Day Reporting Specialist, these are the same individuals that are delivering these evidence-based curricula would be providing the case management as well. Each Day Reporting Specialist would maintain a caseload of somewhere between fifteen and twenty-five individuals. Really, what their function is, is to assess, you know, what are the needs? Help the individual create a plan, make referrals as necessary to address those criminogenic needs, monitor the, those linkages to these community resources. Are they being utilized? Are they being effective? Are there barriers that are preventing meaningful access? And then if necessary, report to the probation officer in court. Things that we would report would be program non-compliance, failed urine analysis. And we would do drug screening in the program. Duty to warn situations, so all of those things would be reported to our case management. The big focus of case management is gonna be, you know, those services that we wouldn't be offering, that we know exist in the community already. The individuals are likely going to need psychiatric services, the GED program, English as a second language, financial literacy. And then it may be some of those specific supports, such as for housing, making referrals to the food bank, public assistance. We would also maintain an ancillary fund that would allow us to meet very specific concrete needs. You know, a security deposit, a suit for a job interview, transportation for the first week of employment until I get my first paycheck. These would all be things that we would utilize the ancillary fund for.
Where does that money come from?
It would be built into the budget. What this graphic does is it provides you with a little bit of understanding of what an individual's experience may be navigating through the Day Reporting Center. So the first, the top section in the yellow, that's our intake and assessment phase. So we would receive a referral from a probation officer, and our staff would contact that individual within twenty-four hours of receiving that referral and schedule an immediate intake. Yes, sir.
I think, so it's clear, how we would hope that this would work is that the referral wouldn't of necessity always be coming from a probation officer. You know, we're viewing the Day Reporting Center as being a, I guess, both a front-end and a back-end kind of situation, where the referral might actually come from, maybe it comes from an attorney, a defense attorney. Maybe it comes from a counselor, something of that sort. Does that, does that in any way impede what your game plan is here in terms of who's making the referral?
Right. We would want to work with the probation department and the court and identify appropriate points of referral. And once we've identified those appropriate points of referral, yeah, it wouldn't matter whether it came from the prison, or attorney, or probation officer.
Well, because it would be like, I mean, it would be like a crossroads program. You know, we wouldn't really want to have every defense attorney make a referral at crossroads, because that person may not be eligible. So that's just like, we would, that the court would set up acceptable referral, research sources.
Absolutely. Yeah, multiple entry points would be certainly fine. We would schedule an immediate intake. That intake would include, you know, our administrative paperwork, the appropriate releases. It would provide the individual with an overview of the expectations of the Day Reporting Center. And then it would be our assessments, the LSIR and the ANSA and any other assessments. And at that point, we would develop an individualized service plan. So this should take us about a week to have an individualized service plan that provides us with a meaningful roadmap through, that would guide the treatment process. At which point, we would enter our intensive treatment programming. That's the group treatments that we just discussed, the evidence-based curricula. It would also include individual treatment. As I mentioned, our program director would be a licensed, master's-level therapist that would oversee the implementation of the evidence-based curriculum, but would also provide individual treatment as well. And the ongoing case management to make the appropriate referrals to community linkages and to monitor the effectiveness of those. And then finally, our aftercare phase. So following that intensive programming, we would continue with the ongoing case management. Individuals would come back once a week for a weekly check-in and for the advanced practice group. We would, at the end of services, do our assessments again, because we want to measure his progress. And then finally, it would be creating a discharge plan. A plan to help people maintain that success beyond graduation. And it would be highlighted with a formal graduation event.
And after the program, do they have access, continuing to access to the 24/7 hotline?
That would be the, part of the aftercare. One of the benefits of having that aftercare piece is usually that would be about a thirty to forty-five day period, where if somebody is going to experience a crisis, there's a high likelihood it's going to occur during that time. Part of that discharge plan, though, is what are the resources that you have moving forward in the event that you would have a crisis? And so part of that would be educating them on existing crisis-type resources that already exist within the county. Again, helping people learn how to navigate through the community and various systems to meet their ongoing needs. All right, with that, I'll turn it back over to Gordon.
Great. Just want to talk a little bit about our key personnel. Again, some of the numbers and the finances, of course, that PCS spoke about. So first, the key personnel. David White's our president, in twenty-plus years. He's who I report to in the operational needs, has experience in the criminal justice system. The programs, Cheryl Reiling, myself, and Jessica Carlton are all vice presidents overseeing PA, Ohio, and Maryland. We all have different areas of expertise, clinical operations, quality assurance. So Bob has a bunch of people to go to and support to make sure things are running smoothly and we're getting anything addressed at the Day Reporting Center. We're gonna have a program director. Bob said that that person is gonna be licensed and to fulfill the full capacity of the program of two-six day reporting specialists full-time. And that would be the one hundred to one-hundred-and-fifty individuals that we had talked about. And also administrative manager onsite, actually administrative manager, and I have to cover the almost sixty hours of service and hours of operation that we have planned. So they would be on staff as well. When we looked at per DMs, what we did, what figured out with Office Space is a sixteen dollar and forty cent per DM for the program with the expectation, and we didn't do a titrated rate, like PCS had a titrated rate based on numbers. What I did was look at cost to serve the minimum operations. So when you're looking at that, we would expect to have a minimum operations. And what we had figured out would be sixty-six individuals at that same rate. So that would be a minimum payment to cover our hard payments to avoid having multiple per DMs per youth. So we know our operations fixed costs. And then as we hire and get the Day Reporting Specialist on, those numbers would go up, and therefore, that cost would be covered when we hired the staff. So in other words, instead of having a titrated rate, we basically have one per DM rate, so that's sixteen forty. And that is based on Office Space with the rent. And I know there's different things going on, and we have different options in buildings. We haven't selected a building yet. So that has the potential to move a little bit one way or the other based on square footage and what we decide on a space. And we do have a couple spaces that we've identified that we can build out, and we'll talk about here soon.
Sorry, can you go back to that slide about-
Which one?
Just the one right before that.
The one before this?
Nope.
Okay. So the six-day reporting specialist is the full capacity. And then right around at the, with the sixteen ninety-three, would be about sixty, sixty youth, or sixty individuals to be paid for at a flat rate to cover our operations before we get up to what, as their rate was lowering. Yeah, I looked at doing the rate and the different per DMs and the billing and everything. It just seemed like, to me, if we have a fixed cost on our operations, that's where our risk comes in. So that's where we would look to make sure that we were covering that.
How would Lebanon Valley College, what is the partner, the relationship?
Well, I think, one of the primary things, so our partnership with Lebanon Valley College currently centers around the Senior Criminal Justice and Sociology Seminar with Dr. Sharon Arnold. Every fall, twenty Lebanon Valley College students participate in a pretty intensive senior seminar, working alongside of our youth on various service projects to give them some firsthand experience of, you know, what it's like to work with individuals in the criminal justice system and what are some of the challenges that those individuals face. It's an incredibly meaningful experience for both the VC seniors, but also for our kids. kids that we work with currently. It's also a great resource for a qualified pool of applicants. And so, one of the things that we would utilize Lebanon Valley College for is to identify personnel for, for the program upon their graduation. Lebanon Valley College also offers a number of resources to individuals who are completing our program. A lot of education on what Lebanon Valley College has to offer community members. We've done college tours with the kids that are in the program in hopes that they're, at some point, going to be able to latch on to some of the resources, and hopefully some of them will become Lebanon Valley College students at some point.
And just also to touch on this as well, I can't say enough about the partnership with the probation office. It is not just YAP providing the service, it is truly a partnership, and we have probation officers at the facility, just like we do have in the Day Treatment Center for the youth. It's been a great relationship, it's ongoing, and we learn as we go. YAP does not just come in and provide a service without input from the probation office. Sally will speak to that, and we know that, so as we start to do things and get it into the meat of the program, there's definitely things that are going to come up that we're going to have to address and make sure that we take care of them and keep the program moving in the right directions from the inception. So, and that's been a great partnership so far, and I'm sure that will continue. We have letter support from Senator Fulmer, who's worked closely with us, and our Greenworks helped us with that, have been involved with the youth. And we also have a council on accreditation, which is COA, who are going to go through rigorous auditing on all of our policy procedure manuals, our HR. I've been a part of that, and they really tear our agency down bit by bit to make sure we're truly doing all the things that we talk about daily, and we invest a lot of time and effort into that to make sure we're meeting what we call our gold standards of our agency to ensure our operations is successful and able to pass that rigorous audit.
So you're not open on Sunday?
Yeah, we did not have that.
And you're Monday through Friday, nine to seven, so it's ten hour today, that's fifty, and then four on Saturday is fifty-four hours.
Fifty-four hours, yeah. And we could look at changing that as well, if this Sunday treatment is a necessity, we could, we could look at adding those hours.
This is what we envisioned necessary to provide that flexible treatment for those individuals with employment obligations. So for an individual who worked first shift, there would be evening treatment available for an individual who worked second shift, who are maybe working twelve-hour days, and so they can even access some of that treatment on Saturday mornings.
Drug testing?
Yes, we provide, we would provide routine drug testing.
What is that, how, can you define that?
Drug testing, so it, we would either use whatever, and we would defer to what the probation department thought was appropriate, whether we use three-panel or five-panel drug testing, but it would be at least monthly. For some individuals with drug and alcohol needs, it may be multiple times per month, and it would be very much random. So it may occur during the day, it may occur on the evenings, it could occur during, I'm saying, our weekend hours as well. All of our day reporting specialists would be trained in how to effectively administer urine analysis.
Does staff also get drug tested randomly?
No, that is not a current policy.
You're going to circle back to the location options, but I don't really, I don't know if you need to divulge that, I saw that there's public transportation access.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I was going to give you, we have three or four in mind, I don't know if you want to hear about them.
If you don't mind disclosing.
Yeah, no, that's fine. The Public Commons on Old Lebanon, the Old Lebanon Daily News, so that was, were one of those. The corner at Third, oh, the former, is a former doctor's office, and what was the last, Safe Right Shopping Center, Twelfth and Main.
Well, that's to Coleman's Park, they have a space available up there, we've already inquired on that.
Is there a scene a lot?
Yeah.
They have five, yeah.
Yeah, and a lot of them, the ones we looked at were built out because we want to make sure we have room, like computer room, office space for staff, and training rooms, and separate rooms for the therapy as well. So fairly large spaces.
Where's the first location that you mentioned?
The Lebanon Daily News building.
Oh, is there stuff available?
There is.
Yeah, they're redoing it.
Yeah, because that's actually.
I was going to ask, is that taken for, I was going to ask, is that taken for?
Yeah.
They got the zoning issue cleared up, and they're renovating it too.
And I think they've since built out in there as well, if that was the one I looked at, we could pretty much do it in one, too.
Which was nice.
So with a caseload of fifteen to twenty-five individuals is what I heard you say?
Yes.
And a maximum of one hundred and fifty, that would be five to six personnel that you would hire. Do they provide any counseling and treatment services onsite, or is everything just, hey, I'm going to send you here, 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 here?
No, they provide all those evidence-based treatment and get supervision from the staff, so all that curriculum.
On-site.
On-site, that's all onsite, and we have, we'll have a schedule.
And what kind of security do you have in plan?
Currently, what we're using is metal detector wands, and we're using pat downs with our juveniles right now. We also have a video surveillance system in our existing office, and we found all of that to be, to meet all of our needs. Additionally, part of our required agency training is two days of crisis intervention training. It focuses on both verbal interventions as well as a variety of physical interventions. Obviously, we hope to never have to use the physical interventions, but we want to equip our staff, so in the event that such interventions would be necessary, they're not winging it. So, the, the training, video surveillance, metal detection wands and pat downs have met all of our security needs.
It really keeps the contraband out, too, what we did find at the beginning, that was an issue, kids bringing cell phones, cigarettes, different things, and we've got a handle on that now.
We're able to handle that, I'll let that. You'd asked about the interventions that we would provide onsite, this is the programming we'd provide onsite.
And that's what all the day reporting specialists would be doing onsite.
Is it possible to get you to email the actual presentation?
Absolutely. I'll have it emailed to you by the end of the day. Pete?
Yeah.
I have a specific question, are there any additional questions?
I have something on a separate note when we're finished with this.
Yeah, I was going to do a little conclusion on some things, so it wasn't quite done, so I'll finish, I'll finish real quickly. So, YAP has forty-plus years of providing outcomes-driven and cost-effective alternatives to the institution of high-risk and high-need individuals, and seventeen years of serving Lebanon County make the agency well-positioned to successfully implement the proposed program. YAP provides staff leadership with experience and expertise, established local partnerships, and strong organizational infrastructure that supports the agency's ability to effectively execute and monitor services along with mechanisms to ensure they are implemented with fidelity. My online is, we know what we've been doing, we've done it other places, we're doing it here, we have an array of services, and we want to continue to add to that, and we want to provide a service that I think is very needed, especially with the issue of overpopulations in prisons. But one thing we did want to cite in how we developed our service is the Council on State Government's Justice Center. Nationally, reported that Pennsylvania has the highest rate of adult paroles and people on supervision, and in the county level as well. Three-quarters of those individuals are on adult probation and incarceration that the county's paying for. And looking back at the cost, if we can address that, which the stats say are there, we can decrease the cost, and the cost of our program will easily be offset by the cost of decreasing the prisons. I mean, when you look at that cost and decreasing, and what we can do to address, even if we don't hit our recidivism goals, if we get close to them, we're effectively reducing that, that cost for incarceration and people on parole that you're paying for, so.
I, I know that you're involved in adult services now, obviously, because of what you said right at the beginning. Do you folks operate a program that's like we're looking at, at any location now?
Currently, no. We have the Life, we have the Life Coaches Project that was a grant that was a year or two, and then we did not receive funding for that, that was a federal grant. So we operated that program, and in Pennsylvania, we currently do not open a day, or operate an adult day.
Or in any other state, not just in Pennsylvania, do you have a?
We do in New Jersey, we have some adult, adult programs. I don't specifically know it's a Day Reporting Center, but it's, we have some father programs with, that have been incarcerated, working with them to work with their children getting out of prison, so we do do that as well.
So you don't operate any day reporting centers currently?
Not, not in, no.
For, for adults?
For, not for adults. So we have a day reporting center in Philadelphia for juveniles, and it's very large, same concept as well. And we do do that, and believe it or not, the programming and a lot of the things go hand-in-hand with the type of centers and services we're working on.
I guess, I'm still confused about the cost from you. I heard sixteen dollars and forty cents per DM, but I thought that that was just for your office space, basically, and I didn't hear what the maximum cost would be per person to go through this program.
Oh, it was, it was sixteen forty was the per DM, and that's the maximum cost. So we would not charge more than sixteen, but what we would do is look to have a minimum, like they had a forty, like a minimum of sixty to cover our operations cost, and I'd want to look more specifically at that in regards to when we have our office space, what is that, what is that minimum amount at sixteen forty, minimum slots or minimum people to fill, so we cover our cost.
So from day one of opening, you would expect the county to pay you as if we had sixty people in there, even if we only had ten.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, and that's just to cover our hard costs. I mean, we can't afford a startup, it's a different way of looking at paying for a startup cost.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, we appreciate your presentation very much.
On a completely separate note, unrelated to this, I just, since we don't have an opportunity to get together like this often, I would like to plug the work that we've been doing with the day treatment program, and if Gordon, if you would be willing, because I'm not sure that I had an opportunity to mention it to the judge, about the pay for success, pays for success.
Oh, yeah.
And the, the opportunity that you have with the state funding and what the juvenile court judges.
Yeah, so we are very fortunate enough to work with a company called Social Finance, who, their mission is capitalizing, or mobilizing private capital to make social change. Great concept, think about raising funds, giving back to the community. So we're set to have a meeting in Lebanon, one of those counties, we're set to have a meeting July nineteenth with eight juvenile probation, chief juvenile probation officers throughout the state. It's a go-or-wolf proposal, and it's a long haul, but we will be working with the day reporting type service, day treatment type service, and truly alternative to placement and reentry services for youth. And it's been an ongoing planning process, but it's in the works. So essentially, the model, the Social Finance raises the private capital to initially pay for the program, so Lebanon will be getting services, and on the back end, the investors will get paid on, if we meet our outcomes and those goals. So there's, there's an evaluation methodology that's far more than we've done now, so we're really excited about that. Again, it's in the infancy stages, it's stages, so we're not quite there yet, we have the meeting with all the probation officers, and we're really looking forward to that, so that is an extension to the services world we're providing.
Lebanon, it has been targeted because of the work and success that we've done with our day or juvenile day treatment program. That's why I wanted to point it out, and we just had a conference call with the executive director of the Juvenile Court Judges Commission, and they are really looking at modeling our day treatment program, so that was pretty exciting.
Yeah, no, it's great, and we do, and the biggest takeaway from that is the evidence-based practices, it's so huge now, we have them all listed, and make sure we're providing the dosages and tracking the outcomes to show that that's successful, we're actually doing what we're saying, and we do track that and have outcomes, all those things as well.
I don't want to prolong the, you know, distract this other issue, but I'm just curious, do you know, or have a feel for the juveniles that you're dealing with through the success of this kind of a program? Are they, do they have parents and uncles and so on, and aunts that are in the system? Is that a percentage that we could put a number to, or is that something that, are we going to see the fruits of in the multi-generational incarceration and type of stuff? Do you see that as, you know, that in the day reporting? You have to put a dent in that kind of breaking, so, yeah, you have to, that has to somehow.
I can, I can tell you, one of the outcome measures is the youth we serve, and then tracking them post-incarceration, so that data will be tracked.
And, and just, this is kind of from a sesame street perspective, but I sit in on all of the graduations that occur out of the, well, most of the graduations that occur out of the program. Four and a half out of five young men that will get up and do their graduation project will tell you that their dad was not in the picture, they were, they've been incarcerated. So that, that is, that's huge.
That is huge.
It's huge.
And that's the one, and that's why we chose that one, which one is it, the parenting inside out, because that's directly supposed to work with that individual who's been incarcerated that has a parent, and that the material in there focuses exactly on those skills.
And they sadly attribute that to part of, it's real emotional to sit in those graduations, but they sadly attribute that to part of their major problem and how they, you know, the lack of guidance and mentorship and it's, it's really sad.
They learn, I mean, they learn the behaviors when they're with.
One area that we assess our juveniles on is trauma, and the ACE study, which was done many years ago, looked at seventeen thousand kids nationwide and identified, you know, the adverse experiences of these kids. One of the identified adverse experiences that leads to negative outcomes for young people is the incarceration of a parent, and that's one of the most significant ACE experiences of young people. We see that time to time again with the juvenile students that we're working with.
Yeah, and the Council of State Government Justice Center outlines all the things that you need to adjust the criminogenic needs, and we really looked at all that research and geared the program around making sure we're applying what they're saying needs to make a difference, and that's, that's how we did it.
All right, well, thank you. Can we just make a couple minutes, two minutes?
Oh, sure.
When you, when you step in.
Wait, next day, you?